Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock. Pursuant to section eighty-four, fourteen-eleven of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District One and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number Nineteen will be held on Monday, June second, two thousand and twenty-five at six P. M. in the Teaching and Learning Center at the Teacher Administrative Center, thirty-two fifteen Cummings Street. Please visit our website, www OPS dot org. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to section eighty-four, fourteen-twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Teaching and Learning Center on the North Wall. I'm also going to note for anybody that's trying to watch the stream, we are not streaming tonight, but you can go to our, it is being telecast on the Knowledge Network. But love that. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, and Dr. Holman will lead us in the OPS Vision and Mission Statement, both of which are on the top of your agenda.
The vision: Every student, every day, prepared for success. And our mission: To prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please. Dr. McFarland.
Almanza. Erdnberger.
Present.
Paul.
Here.
Holman.
Present.
Krackey. Magnusson.
Present.
Smith. Snipes. Tealyn.
Here.
Five, present.
With five members, we do have a quorum. I do want to assure you, we haven't irritated the other four people. They all have very good excuses. Two of them are out of town. One of them is speaking at a graduation tonight, and the fourth one has a personal issue, so is not able to attend. So I guess I would ask that entertain a motion to excuse the absences of Mr. Smith, Ms. Snipes, Ms. Almanza, and Ms. Krackey.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Ms. Magnusson and seconded by Dr. Holman. Roll call, please.
Paul.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Magnusson.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Five, aye.
Thank you very much. Up next is the school spotlight, and I would like to welcome Central High School to the podium, please. Thank you.
Hello, and thank you, President Erdnberger, Vice President Snipes, and members of the board, and of course Superintendent Ray. I would like to present you to the very first OPS State Championship Esports Team. I have a few. I have a few students here of our totaling number of seventy-seven for our team. These players are the most dedicated OPS students out there. Our season is the longest season out of any other sport. We run from August, well, until our, we have an upcoming match on Thursday this week for a championship, which I'll get to later. Outstanding record this year. We played a total of six hundred and ninety-two competitive matches. Of those matches, we won four hundred and sixty, and that is an average win rate of sixty-six percent, which is rather outstanding in the video game industry. Over the two semesters, our state champions, Centrals, we dominated our field. In the state league, we competed in eight different titles. We medaled in five of them. Those were, we are the East E-Chest Champions, the Fortnite Champions. In League of Legends, we placed second. Smash Brothers, second and fourth place. Overwatch, we placed third place. And missing one, but I can't remember. All right. We also competed in the National League called Play Versus. That league, we reached the top twenty-five of all high schools in the nation out of over four thousand. Highlighted this season, we made, we have consecutively made six teams in that playoffs in the Central Time Zone Division, which is more than a majority of the schools. We also won the Fortnite Play Versus Championship this year. And that is the match we'll be playing in the National Championship starting this Thursday. Without further ado, I'd rather, I'd rather have the students tell you a little bit about that. I, I refer to them as their gamertag, so I'd like to invite Chase and RJ, please. To say something about esports.
Um, I joined esports because I have always liked playing video games since I first picked up a controller, and I've just, it's a nice place to make friends and just a nice place to call home.
I, huh? I'm Ramon, and I joined esports because it was like an escape from like school. And also like, it was, it was a fun thing to do, like if you liked, loved video games, you wanted to do more with that.
Okay, well, I think we'll move on to questions, but do I see trophies standing, sitting over there? Oh.
Yeah, we have, we brought along with us our state championship trophy of overall best team in the state. The Fortnite Division One Championship Trophy and the Play Versus Central Time Zone Champion Trophy.
Dynamite, when we take pictures later, presumably the trophy is what we're coming up to. Do we have any questions, anybody? Ms. Paul.
Thank you, and I love to see our district kind of embracing esports and all it has to offer. Because you can actually make a career out of esports nowadays, and you can make a lot of money out of it, too. So I love to see that you're using your hobbies and turning it into something that you can learn and grow from. My question for each of you is, what game do you play, and what's your favorite, or, and why?
Well, I play Super Smash Brothers Ultimate on the Nintendo Switch. And I've been playing that series since, well, like twenty-twelve. It's been a while, but I love that game a lot, and it's very fun competitively.
What characters do you main?
I mean, I used to main Yoshi, like at the start, but like towards the end, I started playing Ridley.
Um, I play Overwatch, and.
Who do you main?
A lot of characters. I play mostly tank. I play Diva, Sigma, Reinhardt, pretty much all of them.
Very cool. If you couldn't tell, I'm a huge video game nerd, so I watch a lot of streamers on Twitch play video games. It, it's really entertaining, and it's really cool, so I hope that you continue doing this, and I wish you the best of luck to everybody on the team.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. I, I did notice that you were the only one that seemed to understand the answers to those questions. I, I just want to give kind of a shout out to our curriculum department, who I remember about four years ago, we were told that we were going to be adding esports to all of our schools. So if I'm not wrong, you guys have been playing personally since two thousand and twelve, but we haven't had teams except for like the last four years or so. Is that right?
The, we first formed the team when I came into Central, and that was two and a half years ago. So we started midsemester. We weren't ready to go in the August, but the second January rolled on, we went in and started. Then last year was the first full year, so this is only, this, for all OPS, this is only the second full year.
That is a really steep trajectory to get to accomplish all of this in that period of time. I do have a grandson who's really good at Donkey Kong, so when that gets added to the competition, you let me know. He's only seven at the moment, but I've been assuring him that there's a future for him, so I'm counting on that. Any, Dr. Holman.
Congratulations to you on, quickly, for those of us who don't know and only watch our kids watch video games on YouTube, which makes no sense to me at all, but explain to us, what is a competition day like? Do you, is everybody in one room? Are you in your own places? Is it kind of like you're in one of those video game trucks and everybody's playing? Like, what is it like?
For us, our competition is the way it looks. To an outsider, they will say it's organized chaos when, when they see it, because on the PC side of the room, I've got forty kids running around fighting over thirty-five computers, and we're all trying to figure out where everything is. Then we figure out our starting lineup for the day on a competition day, because we, if the team takes five, we usually have eight people on that team, and we have to figure out what's best, or who, what the opponent plays and what we play, and how are we going to counter that? That you build up for the week, and then we finally sit down. We get the, the, our team of five together. We run practice with those five, figure out what roles each one's going to do, such as a tank or a DPS, and then we figure out how we're going to start the match. For somebody like, for Smash, it's the same thing. They, they figure out, they could see what their, who their opponent plays the most. And I will say that RJ does confuse our opponents, because he, one of his top three characters that he plays is random. He'll play any character against anyone, so they never know who he's going to be pulling out, which is very helpful and confusing our opponents.
So like, how many hours are you engaged in this in a day, or like during the, because it still makes no sense to me whatsoever, but.
I will say personally, I am a gamer. I game four hours a night, minimum, and that's even after school and after practice. I keep, my room is open literally at three oh five. I have students in there, and we, we're done by six. And they stay, they game, and for parents out there, it's the best thing, because parents have literally said, "You've gamed them out." When they're home, they actually have to tell me about their day, because they can't run and play, because I, we've, they've been playing for three hours already. It's a very helpful tool to them. Other things that have really boosted everything, I believe I'm tracking grade point averages at the moment. To be able to play, you have to make grades. I will not let somebody be on the team with failing grades. And I believe Chase improved by one point five GPA from the time that Chase joined to, to before that. So that's part of the reason why I have Chase up here. You stayed a good student. You're good. But when it comes to competitions and everything, they practice just like a regular athlete. They have to play, and at the end, I critique, and it's like, well, you, when you were running that, this is what you should have done here. Why did, explain to me why you did this instead of that. And if they don't have an answer, we run it again, go through another competition match.
Well, I love all of this. Thank you so much for being here, and it's so different from what we're used to hearing as far as our programming that's offered for, for our students. So thank you so much for being here and sharing all this with us and giving us a glimpse into your love and your passion, and, and obviously, it's, it's tremendous. And so congratulations to you all again.
Thank you very much.
This is very exciting, yeah. I know that when the twins hand me their Nintendo Switch controller, I just push buttons randomly and things. I either win or I lose. That's about, that's my idea of gaming. So very, very wonderful for you to have pulled these students together and given them something to have in common, and somebody said, "Good friends for life." If we don't have any other questions, let's take a picture. Bring the trophies. Thank you again, Central, and congratulations. We do not have any public comment tonight, so we will move on to the next part of the agenda. First of all, ordinarily Superintendent comments, and I was remiss in not pointing out that our Superintendent Ray is attending a graduation tonight at Bryan High School. So his Chief of Staff, Dr. Chisholm, is joining us in his stead. Thank you, and welcome. Board members' comments? Go for it. Dr. Holman.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to quickly say happy last two days of school for all of our students. Congratulations to all of our graduates. Thank you to every single employee of the Omaha Public Schools, as well as our extended family that drives our students to and from school every single day. None of our success could be possible without each and every single one of our individuals that are a critical piece to our, our school district moving forward successfully every single day. And I just want to point out, I just feel like this has probably been one of the smoothest school years and one of the quickest school years since I've been on the, the school board. And so thank you to each and every single one of you that has made that possible, and happy summer.
Excellent. Anybody else? Okay, well, Dr. Holman, I think you spoke on our, all of our behalf, because we are all equally thrilled that our kiddos and teachers are done for the, and other staff in the buildings. Only have two more days to work hard and then hopefully get a chance to breathe for a second. Moving on to the consent agenda. At this time, any board member may request that any item on the consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda and be considered and voted on separately. At this time, are there any items boards members would like to pull from consent? Seeing none, are there any abstentions to any of the items on the consent agenda, Dr. Holman?
Thank you, Madam President. I need to abstain from Claim Report C, item I six, for my role on the Omaha Schools Foundation. Thank you.
Okay, with that abstention, we will go with, roll call, please. I need a motion in a second. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Tealyn and seconded by Ms. Paul. Thank you.
Magnusson.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Five, aye.
Excellent. Motion passed for the consent agenda. The next item is an information item. We will have a staff presentation on K- Twelve music and KH Twenty-One alternate curriculum materials and resources for use beginning with the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. As a note particularly to my fellow board members, those materials are available on the table over there by Dr. McFarland's desk, if anyone has an interest in looking at them, and it's my understanding that they will be here at the next board meeting as well. Dr. Holman, I'm going to spend a second to point out that the esports sounds like it takes place inside as opposed to your district middle school track competition, which was outside with an umbrella under the sun, if I recall correctly.
Good evening, President Erdnberger and members of the Board of Education and colleagues. I am Chris Pereira. I am the Special Education Teaching and Learning Consultant for Special Education. And I have a colleague here also who partnered with me, Tracy Kovar, also a Special Education Teaching and Learning Consultant. The purpose of tonight's informational meeting is to provide you with the curriculum recommendations we propose for the alternate curriculum programs, kindergarten to age twenty-one, our transition program. The alternate curriculum program, the multi-handicap program at JP Lord, and the transition program are designed to meet the unique needs of students with significant cognitive disabilities who require a modified curriculum aligned to the Nebraska State standards with extended indicators. The program spanned sixteen grade levels, serving roughly eight hundred fifty students from kindergarten through age twenty-one. The alternate curriculum programs all provide individualized instruction that emphasizes functional academics, communication, social emotional development, daily living skills, vocational and community participation. Instruction is provided by each student's individualized education program or IEP and focuses on preparing students for increased independence, access to their community, and successful transition into adulthood. The curriculum is delivered using evidence-based practices, including direct instruction, visual supports, structured routines, and hands-on learning activities to meet the needs of our students. Our team engaged in a comprehensive and inclusive process to select new curriculum materials and resources for our alternate curriculum programs for all core content areas. The timeline here provides highlights of the key stages of this process. The process began in May of two thousand and twenty-four with the issuance of requests for proposals from vendors. Initial reviews were conducted by various stakeholders, including representatives from CIS, Special Education, English Learners, Native Indigenous Centered Education, and teacher groups. Furthermore, diversity and equity and community reviews took place this fall, allowing members the chance to view materials, complete evaluation rubrics, and share their insights. After the final materials were selected, special education teachers and students then engaged in field testing in February. They also reviewed additional instructional materials throughout March and provided their feedback. Tonight, we will begin with our core curriculum recommendation. Every student deserves the opportunity to learn from high-quality, standards-aligned instructional materials to prepare for success in college, career, and life, as outlined in our portrait of a graduate, including our students with the most complex and extensive support needs. Based on feedback from stakeholder groups and our own reviews, we recommend the adoption of attainment company. Attainment consists of research-based core curriculum, including independent living, vocational skills, community, and safety skills for students kindergarten through transition age twenty-one. Attainment is specifically designed for students with the most significant cognitive disabilities. The curriculum offers, offered covers all content areas and is also aligned with the Nebraska State standards with extended indicators. This curriculum offers, offers resources for all grade levels in an alternate curriculum program and is tailored to accommodate the diverse needs of our students, ensuring that. and is tailored to accommodate the diverse needs of our students, ensuring that every learner has the opportunity to succeed. It includes tangible books, reducing that reliance on screen time, and providing a consistent framework for our students and their families. Additionally, throughout the process, we discovered that attainment was quick to address our inquiries and met our needs in a timely manner. We chose attainment and are excited about this curriculum because it will put books in students' hands, and the texts or titles you will see in general education classrooms. It offers a robust math and science program with hands-on activities and experiments for our student engagement. The materials are representative of the student population, and they will see themselves in texts and materials, support functional life skills geared towards their specific Given the broad range of our students' characteristics and grade levels of the students that we serve, we also recognize that no single curriculum could adequately meet the needs of all of our students across the different subjects, grades, and developmental levels. So we also are recommending supplementary materials and resources to better support the diverse needs of the student population that we serve. First off, we have Building Wings, which includes Readopia Go, Readopia, and News Currents. Building Wing products are designed for students with complex learning needs. Readopia Go and Readopia utilize thematic units featuring adapted classic literature, graphic novels, and multimedia resources to engage students and build background knowledge. News Currents is a current events program which provides weekly multimedia content to help students engage with news and world events. We chose Building Wings, and we are excited to bring this to our students because, again, it offers a wide range of literacy texts in multiple levels. The texts are engaging and come in a wide range of genres. Additionally, Building Wings has multiple accessibility interfaces to support all of our learners. Next is EPS Learning, which includes Sound Sensible and Spire. Sound Sensible is the precursor to Spire, and it focuses on early literacy foundational skills. Spire is an intensive, multisensory, structured reading program designed for students with reading difficulties. It aligns with the Science of Reading Research and Orton-Gillingham Principles to support students with dyslexia. We currently use Sound Sensible and Spire to support literacy in our special instruction classrooms and have seen success. We are looking forward to expanding this to our alternate curriculum program classrooms with the knowledge that all students can learn to read. And last, we have Links from the Star Autism and Support Program. Links is an evidence-based instructional program designed for students with autism and developmental disabilities. Links targets a wide range of developmental areas, also including language, communication, academic skills, social skills, and daily living and functional routine skills. We are extremely excited about the products we presented to you tonight. We look forward to using them with all of our students in our alternate curriculum programs. Again, we thank you for your time, and we look forward to bringing the negotiated agreements from the selected vendors for your approval at a future meeting. Now, I will turn it over to my colleague Sarah Stratton-Bab to present the curriculum recommendation for the K-12 Music Education Programs.
Good evening, President Erdenberger, members of the Board of Education and colleagues. I am Sarah Stratton-Bab, K-12 Teaching and Learning Consultant for Music, and my colleague is Holly Eberhart, Lead Teacher for Music. I'm excited to be here to present our recommendations of new curriculum, resources, and materials. K-12 Music Education is pivotal in fostering creativity, critical thinking, and self-expression among students. It provides a platform for exploring diverse perspectives, cultures, and emotions, enriching students' understanding of the world around them. By nurturing musical skills and appreciation early on, it equips students with invaluable tools for personal growth, innovation, and success within society. Clearly, the arts embody and help build all attributes of a portrait of a graduate. Our team did a thorough and inclusive process to select new curriculum materials and resources for K-12 music. Our timeline begins with sending out the RFP in March of 2024 for K-6 vocal music and in July for fourth through 12th music, ending in April with our final teacher meeting with research and curriculum and instruction support staff. Our process and timeline allowed teachers to field test each product for four weeks. Please refer to the slide for details. As a result of the work reflected in this timeline, we are able to make recommendations for K-12 music curriculum adoption. For K-6 vocal music, Quaver Ed is our recommended choice. It's an interactive online curriculum for teachers and students. Within lessons, students naturally connect to concepts across the curriculum. From finding loud and the quiet sounds in their daily lives to creating a jingle to promote a product, Quaver Ed presents content in an engaging and exciting way for students to learn about music. Students read, sing, and analyze song lyrics, which helps develop vocabulary, fluency, and comprehension. Students are introduced to new and varied vocabulary in context, which helps with word recognition and retention. All of Quaver's content is also available in Spanish. For elementary band, our recommendation is Sound Innovations for Band Book One and Two and Sound Innovations for Concert Band Ensemble Development for Young Band. These resources are geared for our youngest players and present content in a sequential and logical manner. Students are also able to access videos, additional pieces, and accompaniment tracks For middle school band, we recommend the following resources. Sound Innovations for Concert Band Book One and Two, Sound Innovations for Concert Band Ensemble Development Intermediate, Sound Innovation Sound Artistry, Sound Sight Reading for Concert Band and Sound Percussion. These resources continue the student's musical journey, building on concepts from Sound Innovations for Concert Band Book One and introduces ensemble playing skills. For middle school orchestra, we recommend the following resources. Sound Innovation for String Orchestra Book Two, Sound Differentiation for String Orchestra, and Sound Innovations for String Orchestra Sound Development Intermediate Level. Ensemble playing is also introduced in these books for string players and focus on intonation, fluency, music literacy, and creativity. For middle school choir, we recommend the following resources. Sing at First Sight Levels One and Two and Vocalize One and Two. These resources offer a structured approach to music literacy and provide the foundation for healthy vocal production for our singers. For high school band courses, the following resources are recommended. Sound Innovations for Concert Band Ensemble Development for Intermediate and Advanced Concert Band, Sound Percussion, an intermediate method for individual or group lessons, Sound Percussion Ensembles, Sound Sight Reading for Concert Band Book One, and Sound Leadership. These resources build upon the resources used in middle school band to challenge students technically and musically and to improve sight reading skills using decoding strategies. For high school orchestra courses, the following resources are recommended. Sound Innovations for String Orchestra, Sound Development Intermediate and Advanced, and Sound Orchestra Ensemble Development for String or Full Orchestra. These resources help students to continue developing a beautiful, characteristic sound while improving technique and musicianship. For high school choir courses, the following resources are recommended. Sing at First Sight Levels One and Two, Sing at First Sight More Melodies, and Vocalize One and Two. These resources will continue the work established in middle school choirs improving sight reading skills and producing a healthy vocal sound. For our middle school and high school piano courses, we are selecting Alfred's Basic Adult Piano Course along with additional supplemental resources. The course books allow students to move along at an appropriate pace for students in a piano classroom. The Adult Piano Course is geared to a learner beyond elementary age and allows students to find success in learning the instrument quickly and emphasizes the vocabulary and music theory knowledge necessary to perform. For high school music theory, we will be selecting Tonal Harmony by McGraw-Hill. This textbook aligns with necessary components for students preparing for the AP Music Theory exam or to receive dual enrollment credit. This is the text the University of Nebraska Omaha uses for their music theory courses. Students will have access to online components to help prepare them for oral skills training, part writing, and other assignments. As part of the curriculum adoption process, we will also be purchasing equipment to support instruction in the classroom as well as performance enhancements. We have created a standard equipment list for all elementary music classrooms, and will be purchasing items that will ensure that all students across the district have access to the same instruments and music-making opportunities. Equipment will also be purchased to assist our ensembles in performance venues. Elementary and middle schools will have access to equipment that will enhance school concerts and other performances. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Mr. Teelin.
Thank you. If I could start with the ACP curriculum, can you maybe just characterize any significant differences that we have in the new curriculum versus the previous curriculum? If there's particular things that we were looking for that we didn't have before, just innovations in the curriculum that we have now?
Yeah, the current curriculum we're using is Unique and News to You, and that is a very much online curriculum. So the students are often online on computers utilizing the material, or teachers are printing the material off into worksheets or books or whatever the lesson entails. And so now, our team really felt strongly that we wanted, again, books in children's hands, having them read books, actual books. That's something you don't see a lot of in our alternate curriculum programs, is children in books and textbooks that their general ed peers are utilizing. And so that was one of our big, strong items that we wanted to focus in on.
Great.
And the other piece, too, sorry, was the core curriculum, making sure we had content areas that really were well-in-depth content for science, social studies as well, so that they all had a good, rigorous lesson in content.
Yeah, I think I caught some references to, specific references to literacy in some of the presentation. Can you speak to anything in particular with this curriculum that stood out in regards to literacy?
Yes, both the attainment and building wings really stood out with literacy in general, just to have good literature in children's hands. And then, of course, Spire and Sound Sensible really are based on decoding and phonics and vocabulary as well. So all of that entailed a good curriculum that we were wanting to focus in on.
Fantastic. Thank you. I'll let my colleagues ask some questions, and I might have some questions on music as well.
Ms. Full.
Thank you. I feel like today's meeting was tailored to me today because I love music. Music is one of my other passions. So anyways, my question is, is there anything in the new curriculum that's about like production or beat making or like DJing or like any of that kind of stuff? Because I feel like that's kind of what our students kind of, I feel like they would be more interested in learning about. Like, of course, it's important to know music theory and all that kind of stuff, but like the stuff that's really engaging them, I wonder if we offer that at all?
Yes, we're working on that. There were no proposals through our vendors to meet those needs specifically, but we are in the process of researching. It's called DJ Coach to DJ or something. There is a resource that we're looking into, purchasing specifically for sixth grade and middle school students. It would start that DJing component, which I think they would find really interesting. We also have a lot of courses about like music technology and things where nobody necessarily bid resources, but that we are currently offering and will continue to offer.
Very cool. I remember one of my favorite memories, because I went to OPS, when I was in Mars, was my librarian, Mr. Keel, gave me time to go to the library, to the science computer, and make beats on Garage Band. And that's how I got into music, actually. So that's why I kind of wondered if there's anything like that offered.
And we do, our students use, a lot of our elementary curriculum will have Garage Band activities and things like that, so they're getting to learn about loops and beats.
Okay.
And that continues into middle school.
Thank you.
I have a question that's very similar to the one that Mr. Teelin asked with respect to the ACP curriculum. As a social studies, former social studies teacher, the notion of getting new textbooks every 10 years or so in a lot of ways reflects that there's new information on the theory that the notes are staying pretty much the same. Similar to the question that Mr. Teelin asked, what improvement does this curriculum, music curriculum particularly, represent? What changes? Although Ms. Full may have anticipated your answer.
Yeah, I think one of the biggest things for us is our last adoption for elementary music was in 2006. So we don't teach that way out of a book with CDs anymore. And so I think the adoption of Quaver will be a big change for our students and staff, but it just means that some of those opportunities are built out more and just embedded in the lessons. So that's going to be a big change for our staff, but it's really positive. We're really excited about it.
Well, that kind of previews what my follow-up question was going to be, which is how much of a change does this represent for our teachers, and are they looking forward to it or dreading it? I think you just gave me the answer, but you can give it to me again.
Yeah, I think for the new teachers that I've been talking to, they're very excited because we're all going to be learning together. But I would say the majority of our staff, we have really high favorability for that new curriculum for Quaver. Again, our teachers have started to look for outside resources to supplement music class because they don't, it's not sit with your book and read the music out of the book anymore. So I think they're excited that it'll all be in one package in one place and really reduce their planning. But we're also going to try to provide some, like, you know, if they love certain activities, ways for them to embed that as long as we're still teaching the skills, so they don't have to give up everything. But we're excited for the new, the new things will be helpful for us.
Well, every 19 years sounds like a good time to.
Yeah. Because, like, we don't teach that way anymore.
Any other questions? We covered everything. Thank you very much. Again, I'm going to point out to my board members that the materials that you guys were covering in the presentation are available to be looked at on the table over there by Dr. McFarland's desk and will be available for another, through the next meeting, I believe, when we are voting to adopt at the next meeting. Thank you very much, ladies and staff, and everybody that was involved in this. Appreciate it. Next up is the Budget and Audit Committee update presented by Chair of that committee, Ms. Magnusson.
Thank you, President Erdenberger. The Budget and Audit Committee met with administration last month for a financial update on the general fund results year-to-date, as well as projections for the rest of the year. For 2024-25, revenue is expected to exceed budget by 3.34% due to some additional state funding, which will help us reserve our usage and strengthen the year-end general fund balance. Expenditures are projected at 99% of the 2024-25 approved budget. For 2025-26, preliminary revenue projections are based on property valuations. We do anticipate presenting the possibility of a small levy increase of .4 cents to the board, which if approved, would bring our projected total levies to only 10.81%, which is still below the LB 243 revenue cap of $1.5. The general fund budget is projected to rise by $38 million, and that's driven by staff salaries, benefits, contractual costs, utilities, contingency reserves, that kind of thing. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much. Are there any questions about our budget? If I remember correctly, we tend to have small group meetings to go through the detail. Do happen to know when we can look forward to those, or do I have to ask Mr. Ryan?
No, the next Budget Audit and Budget Committee meeting is in June, mid-June, I think.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next up is, moving on to the Policy Committee update with Mr. Teelin.
Thank you, Ms. Erdenberger. The Policy Committee met on May 8th and discussed Policy 5301. If you may remember, we had some corrections that we tried to get in place at the beginning of the last, or in the middle of the last meeting as we discovered some. of the last, or in the middle of the last meeting, as we discovered some discrepancies between the 5301 version and the code version of those, that policy. We're taking another look at that to make sure that we have ironed out all of those details before we bring it to the board for approval. 5205, which we'll talk a little bit later on, second reading, and Policy 5008, attendance, considering some changes to our, the policy around how we communicate on, with families and students on absences, and a new policy based, required by statute on student behavior. And so we'll, considering that model policy and how we might change it before implementation, we also, I'm sorry, in that, that meeting, myself, Ms. Full, and Ms. Erdenberger were in attendance. We also met on May 15th. Again, Ms. Full, Ms. Erdenberger, and myself in attendance. We briefly discussed the, some of those issues with 5301 and 5205 again, and also discussed some general guideposts for processes in the, in the Policy Committee. That is the update, and I'm happy to take questions there, or we can also move to the second reading, I think I next on that as well.
Are there any questions? Mr. Tealyn, let's move on to the second reading of Policy 5205. It's an action item.
This is a, so this is on second reading. We've had it before you, as I think an information item and a first reading. We are, it's on, typically we'd have this as a consent item on second reading, but there are some changes that, relative, I'm not substantive, I would say, changes that we've made. The policy that was previously used and that we had approved in our first reading was, included a significant reproduction of the statutory text from Rule 10, I believe. So the, the idea was that we didn't really need to reproduce that entire thing, but that there were some, some aspects of exceptions to students taking the FAFSA, that we wanted to include that process in our policy. So we have removed the reproduction of the statutory language and included some of that, that exception process and some navigation information about how you would take advantage of those exceptions if you wanted to in that, in the policy. So we are, we do have some changes on second reading, and that's why I've pulled it out of consent and made sure that we brought that to your attention. But again, non-substantive, mostly about kind of cleanup. Happy to take any additional questions on that.
Mr. Tealyn, would you just remind all of us what Policy 5205 is?
5205 is the policy on graduation, and the, we were mostly focused in reviewing this policy at this time because we were changing the, the credits from 49 to 48 and the, and changing the PE credits in the election, or elective credit requirements, yes.
Are there any other questions other than what's it about?
I do have a question. Mr. Tealyn, thank you for explaining. Can you just remind me where we stand as a district as far as graduation requirements, credit requirements in comparison to other school districts?
Yes, so I, it's my understanding that OPS still has the highest requirements for graduation credits in the metro area.
Great, thank you.
You're getting a confirming nod from Ms. Kristofferson.
Any further questions, colleagues? Then on behalf of the committee, submit that for second reading.
Great, since it's coming from a committee, no second is needed. Dr. McFarland, roll call, please.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Full.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Magnusson.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Motion, second reading passes. The next item up on, as an action item, is approval of the report of Legislative Committee and will include some changes to our current legislative position. Legislative Committee met on Friday. Today was day 81 of the legislative session, which means they only have nine days left. Debate over the budget is now complete, and the legislature is waiting to see whether the governor will issue any line item vetos. In the meantime, they're debating Senator and Committee priority bills and are facing a significant time crunch, as you can imagine, with the 90th and final date of the session scheduled for June 9. I wanted to update you on a couple of education-related bills. Parenthetically, most of our education bills have been lumped into one or another basket bills, and they're the only two that are still up for consideration. The first one is LB 653. We discussed it at the last meeting. It was originally a special education bill that has been expanded. We had, we took a position of opposition, sorry, of opposition to LB 653 because of its inclusion of LB 507, which significantly expands our obligations with respect to providing transportation to special ed students who attend our district but who live outside our district. LB 653 has still not been presented to the body for debate despite it being one of two Education Committee priority bills. The other Education Committee priority bill is LB 306. This bill was originally a higher education bill, but it's now been heavily amended to include a host of other bills that involve K through 12 as well. 306 does include the Special Education Forgivable Loan Program, LB 408, which we supported. It also contains several pieces of legislation which we have opposed, including a revised Superintendent Pay Bill, LB 682 as amendment, and the Religious Instruction Release Bill, LB 550. The latter includes a provision which permits individuals to sue school districts and recover attorney's fees if they are aggrieved by our conduct. Not entirely clear what our conduct is in that context, but we are particularly concerned that a decision not to offer release time or a decision to not give credit for the religious instruction could result in our being sued. We previously had adopted a position of monitor with research for LB 306, but now that some of these other bills have been added to it, after much discussion, we are recommending that the board oppose LB 306. Since we're recommending a change in position, this is an action item with a recommendation from the committee, there is no need for a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, since two-thirds of our Legislative Committee is sitting at the board table at the moment. Dr. McFarland, roll call, please.
Elen.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Full.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Magnusson.
Aye.
Or aye.
Okay, thank you very much. The motion passes. Before I close, I do want to mention that there have been rumblings that these two big package bills are going to be further amended to consolidate them. Since we are currently on the record opposing both bills, we may end up, as a Legislative Committee, having to take a further position to oppose whatever package ends up, but we will not have to come back to the board because we already are in opposition to the two bills that we just discussed. Concludes the report of the Legislative Committee. Let me close by thanking the members of the committee, Ms. Snipes, who's not in attendance, but she has been very faithful in attending, and Dr. Holman, who, thank you very much, even when her car has just been hit, decided to, was nonetheless, made the effort to join our committee meeting. Our lobbyists and our staff, thank you very much for your work and for writing the script for me. Appreciate it. And that just about concludes it. I move to approve, oh, we already did, we did that, sorry. There's one receipt of report on the agenda tonight, which is the Head Start Community Assessment 2024-25. There's no closed session this evening, so for the second time in a row, our board meeting has been completed in under an hour. This concludes the meeting. Let the record reflect that the board meeting adjourned at 6:59. Thank you, everybody.